Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 13th.
This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the July 13th Select Board Meeting. As usual, I will read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Our first item is public forum. Is anyone here tonight for public forum? How about, is anyone joining us online that wanted to mention anything at public forum? It doesn't look like it. Okay. Announcements, the only, I wanted to announce that there's another concert in the park, Friday night. There's no food vendor this time, but it's the band Decades, and hopefully it'll stop raining at some point this year, and it'll be a nice night. So I know those concerts are really fun, a lot of people come out to them, so just a reminder about that. And then, you know, I actually had a question. Transfer station stickers, are they for sale yet?
Yes, they are. The decals?
Yeah. Oh, I didn't even see a sign. Is there, is there a sign at the transfer station, Phil? Phil?
No.
Oh, usually they have a sign up that says...
With board is up, and they're probably pulling all stickers we need by the rules in that the...
Okay, well, I've missed it. I was wondering, because I said, wait a second, it's, you know, the middle of July. I haven't bought my, my, I'll do that Saturday, I promise.
You decal posted by July 1st.
Are we selling them at the transfer? Really? Gosh, I don't like that. Okay, well, good. I will take care of that, and that's just a reminder for people at home that transfer stickers are, transfer station stickers are actually overdue. Anyone else have an announcements?
I just hope everybody's having a safe summer. It's July, and that's all. That's all I have.
And nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. So we do have some minutes to approve?
We do. I'll make a motion to approve the regular session and the executive session meeting minutes from June 30th, 2021.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So our first article of posted business tonight is a discussion with the town clerk about our, oh, actually, Lydia, do you want to come up to the microphone? Because you did ask me to do an announcement, and I skipped over it. But that's okay, because you're next, and you can...
Well, actually, for the topic one, we would like to push that to just before the Finance Committee comes in.
Okay.
It's really gonna kind of involve...
There's a cost involved, okay.
So I'm just gonna make my announcement that, to remind everybody, that dog licenses for the Town of Hatfield are due by March 31st every year. So at this point, people are delinquent. We will be sending the delinquent list to the police officers in the next couple of weeks, and then they will be sending out notices to the delinquent dog owners. So if you don't want a notice from the Police Department, please get in and register your dogs.
That one I did on time, so...
And you can do that online or in the office on Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday mornings, so...
Great, thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Lydia.
And then we'll, we'll talk to you later on about the other stuff. It sounds, that's some feedback. For the folks joining us online, if you could mute yourself, because you're creating some feedback here at the meeting?
Caller two.
It, it's, it looks to me like caller three.
Caller three and caller one are not muted.
If you're joining by phone, could you please mute your phone?
Can Karen mute them from here?
I don't know.
Okay, well...
Karen, are you able to mute people so we don't get this feedback?
I'm just gonna save good settings.
Oh, okay, they did it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, so topic two is approving the employee increases, new pay rates.
So these are, this is a result of the meetings that we had with the departments. The Finance Committee had recommended looking at certain, not certain positions, but positions for department heads to look at positions.
Right.
That we need to bring up the pay rate. So between Diane Brazuski, you, Sharon, and I, we sat down and met with, with departments, and then just put a summary together.
This is the end result of what department has recommended.
This is the end result of all those positions.
Okay.
You know, Brian, did you have some...
I didn't have a question. I just had a comment, which is, and these monies have already been approved at town meetings.
Correct.
So this is just so people understand that...
Correct. It was authorized as part of the operating budget.
Correct. Yep. Oh, that's all I, I had. Thank you.
Anybody, do you have any comments, or do you want to make a motion, or?
No, I'm just, I mean, last meeting, we discussed whether any of these positions were union positions and what the status was, and...
None of these positions are union positions.
Okay.
Yep. So I will make a motion to approve the pay rates as brought forth by, or that we have in front of us for the various departments.
Would that be effective July 1st?
Effective July 1st, yes. Thank you.
Since they have been approved by the Finance, and they are in the operating budget, I will second that.
A motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but for me, I'm abstaining from the Fire Department portion of this list. So next, we wanted to have a little presentation from Tony Listowski. Tony is our Water Superintendent. You want to come up? So this, I actually requested that Tony be here. This water report went out, which actually was very impressive, looks nice. But there was, and I had some people contact me with some questions, and then I said, oh, I could see what they meant. And maybe I'm just reading this wrong, Tony, or I just don't understand how it's done, but when you look at the high, the low-high range of, when you look at the amount detected, it, in every single instance, exactly to the decimal point matches the high range of what's allowed. So I think that just caught some people's eye, and I was just curious about that.
Well, the way Mass DEP and US EPA mandates is that we have to report the highest detection. We cannot average it. It's just so, the range of detection is sometimes next to nothing, or it could be even non-detect up to whatever it is, and that's the reporting value that we have to report. I mean, if you look at the next column over, is it a violation? No.
Right, I understand. I think it was just that it looked odd that every amount detected was at the exact high end of the range.
No, that's, that's what we have to report. It's just unfortunate the way they, I mean, even those of us in the water profession, we look at it and scratch our heads and wonder what's going on, so...
So is that actually the amount detected?
Yes.
And it just so happens to be at the exact high end of the range on every single one?
There's only one of them that's at exact high range.
Okay.
Because this is not limits as to what the highest range is. The only one that we came real close on is TH, or TTH, or trihalomethanes is what it comes down to. It's at the top of the list, the third one down.
Yep.
Or, and, actually, no, it's actually halocetic acid, sorry. And that's a disinfection byproduct from adding chlorine, and it has to deal with the age of the water or organics in the water. So last year, with all the rain events we had last spring, it, we came very close to a violation. But we were under it. DEP did question us about it. We had to do a report as to what we thought went wrong, and they've actually mandated that we actually take the reservoir offline more often than not. I mean, with almost 10 inches of rain in the past week and a half, we haven't been using the water plant at all, so...
Okay.
May I?
Yep.
So, so thank you for the explanation. I'm sure you can see where, you know, the calls we've gotten or the questions are like, really? That just seems odd. But thank you for the explanation. I think what people need to focus on, however, if, if they're concerned, is whether there's a violation or not, right?
No.
And of course, if there is a violation, you know, we will report that, but we will have, by the time people have gotten this, we'll have already taken care of whatever that issue was that put us into that category.
Anytime we actually have a violation, we're mandated to actually do a mass mailing.
Yep.
If it's a minor violation. If it's a major thing, well, then it could be news media and boil water effects and stuff like that.
Right.
Which happens in other communities sometimes.
Yeah, let's pray to God we never have that.
Right, but stuff happens. I guess my point with, with my comments, Tony, was, you know, just so people understand the residents, we're on top of this, and if there's something that happens, we'll take care of it, and, and we will do, just like you said, we'll do the mass mailing and, and explain what happened, why, and what, what, what the resolution was, so...
Right.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to, because I, I think Hatfield has great water. I love Hatfield's water, and, you know, but I just...
I mean, I know I sent everybody the question and answer sheet that I designed up as to, you know, quick description. I can ask Karen to put that on with the annual quality report.
Oh, that's a great idea.
That, she can throw that on the website, and it is, you know, that's easy enough.
Sounds good.
That's good. Okay.
Thank you.
Tony, thank you very much. Okay, next is to take up the memorandum of understanding between the Franklin County Solid Waste Management and the Town of Hatfield regarding hauling and disposing of sludge. Phil, did you want to speak to this?
So this is an annual renewal. We've been doing it with Franklin County for years now, so we're just looking for the year's signatures, because the board has to sign off on it. I know Eric's online, if he...
Okay. Eric, did you want to speak to this at all?
No, it's pretty, pretty basic. It's the same form that comes out every year. I think there's two copies there. You sign both, we send them back, and then they send us a copy that I keep with my permit.
And so we don't have the one from last year, but I'm assuming there's no significant changes, and...
No, it's all the same. I did not see that one, but it's the same every year. It's just that they're providing us the service of hauling our sludge for us.
Okay.
Great. I will, I will make a motion that the Town of Hatfield enter into a memorandum of understanding with Franklin County Solid Waste Management District regarding hauling and disposal of sludge.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
Marlene, so this one has two copies of the same thing. I think we actually signed this one. The thing is here, but...
Well, maybe it's...
Maybe we'll just sign all of it.
We, we sign both. We keep one.
Well, there's two, there's two complete ones, but then this one has two signature pages. Let's, we'll just sign it all, it won't matter.
I only have a copy of one in my packet.
Okay. Phil, thanks.
No worries.
I guess we can move on while we take care of this. The, next is the DPW personnel changes.
I think those are gonna be tabled.
That's Phil, too.
Tabled? Those are gonna be tabled, right, Phil?
Yeah, I think, right.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
I'll make a motion to table.
A second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There's another one.
Oh.
Next is the Town Administrator Report, the Water and Sewer Infrastructure Improvements Project Mass Works Grant Quarterly Update.
The Town submitted its quarterly report for the period April 1st through June 30th, and that was submitted on July 1st. We had closed out the quarter with a reimbursement request for $247,578, and I received notice last week that the quarterly report has been approved, and the request has been submitted to the Finance Division at Mass Works. However, they're very busy this time of the year, so there could be a little bit of a delay in the Town receiving that. But just to, to capture that, you know, the grant is $2 million, so to date, we have expended from that grant $545,478.37. There's a balance of $1,454,521.63.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Could I make a comment?
Yes.
So about the project as a whole, not necessarily about the grant in particular, I just wanted to thank Sharon for getting us, us, the Town, a great rate on that other $1.5 million that's part of this, for the borrowing that's part of this project. So Sharon's, for those of you who can't see the back of the room, is sitting in the back of the room, but, you know, it was a low interest rate, and we're, we're ready to keep rolling with the project. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank her for that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Marlene, hazard mitigation.
Yes, we also owe the State a quarterly report for the Hazard Mitigation Plan that we are currently working on. That will, that plan expires later this, the end of this year. So I had reported out the number of meetings that the, the group has had and those in attendance, because they are interested in seeing the input from, from the team. And a total of 25.5 hours, in-kind hours, have been put into this by the department, and we haven't expended any money yet.
And that's Bob, Chief Flaherty...
The Fire Chief, the Police Chief, DPW Director, and representation from the Board of Health on occasion, and the Town Administrator.
Okay. Thank you to all of those.
Yes.
And we are working with a consultant from Pioneer Valley Planning. To date, we haven't incurred any expenses from, from PVPC, but I expect to shortly.
I was gonna say, is that because they just haven't sent anything yet?
They just haven't submitted an invoice. I followed up with them before submitting the report, and they had said that they didn't expect to have an invoice prior to, to June 30th. So we'll just, when we do receive it, and we'll submit it.
30th was two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure I...
Yeah, June 30th. I know, hard to believe. Hard to believe. And then I'm in the process of submitting the Municipality Vulnerability...
Yes.
Preparedness Report. That's at the end of this month. I'm working on that. So that is all I have on those items. I did include a copy of the reimbursement and quarterly report, if you had any questions about that.
The, um...
For the Mass Works.
For the Mass Works.
Yeah.
Like, I don't, but thank you.
It's like a big piece of work.
It's quite a...
Yeah.
It's a big packet.
It's the, the report itself isn't too time-consuming, is, I mean, as long as you have all the information.
Right.
It's just photo, you know, including all the expenses. We have to have proof that we have paid those, as well as the invoice.
And I think it's important on this project, because we're doing the water to watch this project and know if there's any increases on the improvement project on 5 and 10, because we have to know if there's something that happens, and because we're so tight on this project, we, we have to be on top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely. It's very tight.
Okay, I'm good with those two.
Okay. And then the next item is an employee agreement renewal?
Yeah, I would actually like to table that and have some conversation with my colleagues regarding the agreement for tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So table for a next, future meeting?
Yeah, for a next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to do, I don't know.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not sure this, is this old business, topic five? But whatever.
Use of Town Vehicles.
Use of Town Vehicles.
Yes, so that is a discussion that we have been working through.
Fourth, I think, a little bit.
Yeah. And we, we've had a conversation with the, with our financial, the Town's financial officers. There's, I've had discussions with, with the Treasurer's Office, and then conversations that we had with the Auditor and the Accountant. And so what you have in your packet is information from, from the Accountant regarding IRS codes for employees using a town vehicle pursuant, and this is based on the commuting rule that IRS publishes, the IRS publishes. So this commuting rule is, is an alternative to what the Town is currently using, the method the Town is currently using for issuing W-2s to employees who use a town vehicle. When I say use a town vehicle, take home and, and drive to work and back home.
Okay. Have we always done it the same way? Has, I'm curious.
The current, the method that has been used, I'm aware that it has been in place for a considerable amount of time.
Okay.
At least since I've been here six years. Previously, we, I don't believe we even issued W-2s, because we didn't have anybody taking home a town vehicle.
Right.
Yeah. So I would say the six years, that's, that I'm aware of.
Okay. And what was the recommendation of...
Well, they're not recommending what the Town should, should do either way. They're just pointing out the, the options available to the Town. Conversations that I've, I've had with, with some of the financial people is that most communities use the $1.50, but there is a checkoff list.
Of the requirements that have to be met to invoke that.
In order to follow a particular method.
Does our policy make sure that that's...
We don't have a policy.
So we need to have a policy?
We should.
Do you, do you know what the checkoff list is? Have you used the 1.50?
Well, it's the email you have in front of you.
Okay.
From the Accountant.
We have to, what, track miles if we use the 1.50?
Well, we, we should be doing that. We should have been doing that all along. We, we should be tracking mileage, absolutely.
Of all vehicles?
Of all town vehicles that are taken...
Of town-owned vehicles, right?
To home and work, back and forth.
So presently, we're not, are we tracking mileage on vehicles presently with the DPW or not?
Tracking miles for...
I mean, is there a, is there a records of how many miles each of the vehicles uses? Does the Town Mechanic indicate mileage on vehicles? Do you guys indicate mileage on vehicles, or, I'm just curious how this works? If, I know when I worked at UMass, we would have to indicate mileage each week or each month?
No.
Okay.
There's no mileage on our regular vehicles.
Okay, so where you get gas from, there's, there's not, it, I was told that one time years ago, where the gas pump was, they could actually pump in, put in the mileage of the vehicle. I don't know if that software is still, because we were making some changes with the tank up there, right?
But the Vida Root, that tracks what vehicle uses gas, no?
That's, that's part of the gas, the fuel pump.
It's the gas. So in...
Right now, the Vida Root system doesn't work.
Oh. Well, so I, what I think should come of this is, we look at who takes vehicles and why, and then the very specific rules that govern how those vehicles are used. That's a policy that I think we need to establish very clearly, and as, I guess, as well as how, how we expect it to be reported. Should be part of, because that would be part of an agreement that an employee who takes a vehicle would have to agree to.
There's, there, there should be a policy, and indicated in that policy should be the, the owner, operator being responsible for tracking mileage.
Expectation.
Yes, the expectation.
Because the...
And when is that reported? Monthly or quarterly?
And who takes vehicles and why is a big part of that as well.
Right.
And again, allowable uses and, and all of that. So, I mean, we need to head towards having that policy. We don't have a policy, a draft here, but we need to...
We don't. We, we have, well, we do have a town vehicle use policy, but it, it's not really set up for taking vehicles home, driving home and to and from work.
So maybe we could gather a policy or two from another municipality?
Actually, I have two of them sitting on my desk.
Oh.
I've already researched two other communities, and it's quite extensive.
I would imagine it would have to be.
Yeah.
It should be. And we should, we should get on top of that.
When this came up weeks ago, I had done a little bit of research in two communities, and they are current policies for these communities.
Okay.
Well, and I think the important thing to remember is it's a fringe benefit, so the employee should pay, you know, some sort of IRS tax or have it included as, as a fringe benefit. The, the question that arose was what method to use for accounting that information.
Right.
And the Town Accountant and the Town Auditor both have said that the IRS process would be an acceptable way to, to do it, and we aren't currently doing it that way. So hence the reason for our conversation.
May I have a floor, Mrs. Chair?
Sure.
So this actually started eight years ago, before I was long in Hatfield, that a certified public accountant, who was your treasurer at the time, set up this method of how we calculate this. So that was Greg Winters, who unfortunately passed away, but he is one that worked with Edwina at the time, to set up how we track this. For the past eight years, we have done it the exact same way, so we followed past practice, as I would call it, in doing that. In that, in my time being here, Justin Cole has assured me that I was doing it correctly. Tony Roselli has spoken to me personally and said I'm doing it correctly. I've talked to the Town Lawyer, who's telling me I'm doing it correctly. There are several options, but I picked the one based on the facts that I have and the information presented to my office, that what guideline we made. There are two methods, I will never deny that. I did the W-2s in 2020, based on the same way we've done it for years. I did my homework before I even did the W-2, to make sure that we were still in the right frame of mind to make this decision. If the Town would like to change that for 2021, that's awfully up for conversation. I work for you guys, but for 2020, I feel I followed what I was told and the rules that were presented in front of me. We have had discussions multiple times about having a log, and I get told that they don't have time for that, that they're not gonna do it. So this is the same policy we've continued to follow. I think it's, I don't know what's different this year, since this is the past eight years of why 2020 is in question, when I did it the same way in 2019, 2018, and 2017. So certainly, going forward, it's up for making a policy. I think that's a great idea, but I'm not really sure why this year, when I did my homework ahead of time before I even submitted the W-2, to make sure I was following it correctly.
This discussion, though, is about a policy moving forward.
Exactly, but I've been asked in writing to change someone's W-2, and I am not comfortable doing that. So I'm going on the record, on camera, as I requested, that I won't change 2020's W-2 as I was requested to do, because I feel like...
Well, so, okay, Sharon?
I'm gonna defy, defer to you, because you...
Yeah.
So I was on the call with the Town Accountant.
Yeah, you chose not to include me on that call.
Because the conversation didn't include you. I was on the phone with the Town Accountant. Let me finish, please, okay? With the Town Accountant and Town Auditor, and when I asked them, and Marlene was on the call.
Yep.
And actually, Lori's on the call, right here.
We asked them, let me, let me back up. Nobody said you were doing it incorrectly. What we asked was, is there another method to be used for an employee who uses the vehicle to commute? to commute? And they said yes.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, but you just.
Hold it, Sharon.
Right. May I finish?
Absolutely, I apologize.
This has come up in the past. It came up last year and it came up the year before. It never got to the level of the select board where a select board member needed to feel that he had to go and deal directly with the town accountant and the town auditor to get clarification on something. So I did and now we were told, yes, that's how you can be doing it. Yes, it can be corrected. It's a W-2C for last year.
Absolutely.
Well, then I don't know why you would push back on that.
I'm not, because as I said, there is, woo! Roselli, from my understanding, my conversation with Tony Roselli and Lori was that there are two methods, but not that we were following the wrong method. So I was not aware about previous years. You mentioned a few minutes ago that they, they mentioned the IRS. This is in the chapter, which I have right here, there are several methods.
Right.
I picked the one that fits our category.
In your opinion?
Not just in my opinion, ask Lori, the email she sent you just yesterday.
The auditor and the town accountant both agreed that the IRS method that.
This is, I am doing the IRS method.
For $3, for $3 can be used.
No, excuse me, Brian, but I am using the IRS method. My method is in this IRS packet right here.
Not the one we're discussing tonight, though, Sharon. That's the question.
But you're asking me to legally change a document that I submitted and I have no legal reason of why I would change it when this is what fits the needs of the things we do.
In your opinion?
Not in my opinion, right here in writing, it says, "You have to have a written policy which you don't allow the employee nor individual whose use will be taxable to use the vehicle." We don't have a written policy. Then it goes on to talk about how you need to have a log. We don't have the log. We don't fit under that category.
I totally disagree.
So it's not just my personal opinion, it's, I got, I got legal.
Marlene, what was our conversation that the town auditor and the town accountant said on the call regarding a W-2 for last year?
That the W-2C could be reissued, it would be a W-2C.
It can be reissued, but it doesn't have to be reissued. What, why did I, what, why is my policy wrong? We had nothing in writing in 2020 that legally says that I did anything wrong.
Let me quote an email I got from you on, that we all got on January 15th from you. Regardless, I have previously consulted with both the accountant and the auditors on what formula to use for this calculation. You have questioned me on this in the past, but I've always followed the advice of both professionals that we use because I am not an expert on this issue.
Absolutely.
Well, the experts just told us on a phone call two weeks ago, Sharon.
The experts did not say that to me, though, but the experts told me something different.
I'm not saying they did.
Why are the experts telling you one thing and telling me something else?
Maybe it's the way the question's asked.
Oh, really, Brian? You know how hard I have worked for this town and I have do everything by the book as much as possible to the letter of the law. What is different this year than Edwina doing it last year?
What are you, nobody is questioning that.
Lori, do you understand the legal responsibility that I have that you've hired me as the treasurer? If I go and change this W-2, the red flags for auditors, which is exactly what.
Auditor said to do it.
No, he did not.
Yes, he did!
Brian, that is not what he told me.
I don't care what he told you. I have, somebody was on the phone call, Sharon.
But he told me to mark this.
So do what you please do, what the employer asks you to do. When you're worried about an auditor, he's the one that said we can do it that way.
And he's the one who told me not to. I just talked to him, Brian.
When?
I talked to him last week and he said, "Do not change this."
So it's your word versus my word. It's not our word. It's our, the auditor versus auditor.
The auditor told you this, the auditor told me this.
Okay, so hold it, Marlene is.
I'm not getting into an arguing contest with you.
This is, this is outside the scope of, this is getting into a personal matter here, which is not what should be discussed.
This is not my personal for me. I am not, there's no reason, legal reason why I did this wrong. Give me a legal reason to change it, I will.
We're not saying you did it wrong, Sharon.
We're not saying you did it wrong.
There's another way to do it, is what we're saying.
And it doesn't fit our needs. Ask Lori, she's right there on the call.
May I, may I interject here? We're, we're off the subject. The subject that what I heard, maybe I'm hearing this wrong, is going forward, do we want to put a policy in place that's different than the policy we're using going forward? And it seems like we're getting into something else that I wasn't prepared to discuss.
That's fine.
There's, there's two.
The borders are not appropriate to discuss.
Right. It just seems unfair, given the amounts of money that an employee is being forced to pay when it didn't have to be that process, year after year after year. That's what I have a problem with.
So, and so Marlene, you concurs with that Roselli had said we could, we could.
Absolutely.
Appropriate to reissue it?
That there is a provision to reissue a W-2C.
For correction, C for correction.
For corrections. And that the other alternative method is this dollar, $1.50 per one way a day.
But the $1.50, you also said required a log and some other, other provisions that, I'm not fully aware of all the other provisions. I mean, and at this time, I'm not sure if those provisions are being met either. I'm just getting into this right now, so I'm just trying to understand where we're at and what we're doing.
Yeah, so I want to make sure at the end of the day, we've done the right thing for reporting and the fair thing for an employee.
Right.
And so we need to get to that point.
That should be everybody's goal in this room.
Exactly. Everybody should want to make sure that this is done appropriately and fairly. So I, I don't, I mean, I don't want to put Lori on the spot. Lori is on the call. If, if you do want to comment, Lori, feel free to chime in. She's on mute. Maybe she's not really there. Maybe she's not actually there, her camera's off.
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, okay. I, I've just wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in if you want to. I don't want to put you on the spot. I mean, this clearly warrants a lot more discussion, but we do have the issue with the reissuing of the W-2, which is not actually on the agenda, but I do want to know, you know, Brian saying that it was, it was told that it was appropriate to do this, the reissuing of the W-2C.
Well, I believe Lori and Tony said that that.
That is an acceptable practice.
Yes, and that, that could be a process. They didn't, they, admittedly, they didn't say, "Go ahead and issue it."
Right.
They said, "You could have one issued."
Right.
Right, there are two ways to do it and apparently he doesn't, Phil didn't, he didn't apply, the first rule didn't apply to him, so that's why we went the route we went. And Marlene has the paperwork.
Yes.
From the IRS.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get into specifics of who it is, Lori, Lori.
All the files weren't met.
Right. Okay.
I will just wrap up with saying that Roselli's exact words were to me is that I should get an independent CPA firm to write something why they believe my method is wrong for this year to fix 2020's. I did past practice, I did it the same way for years, let's change it for 21? Absolutely, I want to be as fair to everybody. We have done the same for years and that's what I was trying to do the right thing by. I'm concerned that, he also mentioned that lots of towns are getting in trouble for this exact scenario, so this is where it led me down the path. I don't want a red flag on my career that says I changed, you know, made a change that just because someone told me to. I told you that three years, that's who I am. I want to follow the law and this is what the law said to me. That's why I got opinions on January from the people who I respected and think have the expertise. Lori did talk to her, her, her boss before I processed this W-2 to make sure I was doing it right. So there's where I have concerns, is I did my homework before I even submitted it. I just wanted the opportunity to explain to you where I, how I got to where I am today. You know, I've talked to Louise, I've talked to Edwina, I've talked, this is how it's been done for years. I continued that. I'm sorry that it costs, it did not cost the employee as much as is reported on the W-2. You pay a tax on it, the tax tip.
Yeah, I understand how it works.
Just for the other people listening, though, Brian, it's, it's not that they pay, you know, that amount, there's a tax on it for being able to use that vehicle. So that's where I'm at. I don't feel that, I feel I did my homework and I did the right thing and.
Oftentimes, it's not what we ask, it might be the way we're asked. So nobody has said, let me repeat myself, nobody has said that this was done incorrectly, Sharon. What we're saying is there's another option that could have been used.
But didn't, in my opinion, didn't apply.
In your opinion, but that's what we're saying, that there's different options, more than two options, as you said.
There's actually four options, absolutely, there are.
So, so the, the option, if you say, "I wasn't part of your conversation." If the question to somebody is, "Is it okay if I do this, this way?" Or, "Should I be doing it? Is this okay?" And they say, "Yep, you can do it that way," then you've, you've asked and you've been given, "Yep, that's okay." But if nobody says, "Is there another way to do it?" Or, "Could I also do it this way instead?" And I'm not saying you did or didn't ask that question, but I did. And that's how we got to where we're talking about now.
And so did I, so.
Well, I don't know why they didn't tell you that in January and I found it out in July.
He told me there was another option, but we reviewed with Tom Mullins, with Tony Roselli, and with Lori. These are the four options. Let's use this checklist to determine if you picked the right one. That's the exact conversation.
Is the vehicle used for commuting right now?
Yeah.
Well, there you go.
So, but it doesn't mean that.
This is what the fleet administrator from the state of Massachusetts does for all the state vehicles.
It doesn't mean the checklist, but we.
We'll talk about it.
Sure.
I'm done.
Yes, the W-2 could be changed. However, should it be changed? Now, the three of you, how many of you have read the IRS regulations?
Just understand that that's not what is on the agenda if we're going to change the W-2. What's on the agenda is if we're, about the methodology for how we're going to generate these and a policy about town vehicle usage. I don't want to talk about a personal W-2 situation at this meeting. That's not what's on the agenda.
I am not trying to talk about a personal W-2. I am trying to say, the W-2 was issued according to the IRS regulations.
One way of doing it, right.
But the $3 ruling does not apply to this situation. So yes, a W-2 could be changed, but should it be? Because if you haven't read that information the IRS puts out, I don't think you should be judging it until you do.
Well, I think what we should do, quite frankly, Edwina, and thank you for your opinion, is have a conversation with Lori and Tony and Sharon and Marlene and the Board of Selectmen, so we all hear the exact same thing at the exact same time.
Right.
I think that, I think that will clarify this once and for all.
Just, if, what I'm hearing is you're asking for a change to a W-2.
No, we're not.
But we're not, we're talking about a town vehicle use policy right now. That's what the scope of this meeting is.
This morphed into more than it should have.
Apparently, the conversation turned into the wrong direction.
Correct, so.
But we are having that conversation.
Don't ask the treasurer's office to lie and cheat and falsify.
Okay.
That's.
That is totally unfair, because that is not our conversation, Edwina, and I take offense to it.
That is very unfair.
I was quoting what I was told by an auditor and the town accountant. That's where I was coming from. We're not asking anyone to change something illegally to lie and cheat. I'm surprised you would say something like that to us, quite frankly.
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, you, you might be hearing it, but that's how you're interpreting. That's, that's not what's being said, or at least that's not the intent of it. We would never do that. The three of us have way too much character to do something like that. What we want, however, is all our employees to be treated fairly.
And I agree with that.
Well, I think we all agree on that. I guess we just don't agree on how to get there, yet, but we will.
So.
Phil had a question.
Sorry.
I just want to make, make it clear that prior to the administration that's there now or has been, a previous treasurer collector had it as the commute option and it was changed.
When was it changed, do you know?
So it wasn't always like that.
When was it changed? No, we're not going to get into a back and forth about this.
I get to rebuttal that they're, out of eight years, yes, it was done. One year with a, with a treasurer who has clearly been removed of her, her responsibility.
Sharon, stop.
Hold it, hold it.
You can't say, you, you can't just.
We need to stick with the scope of this. This will be looked into deeper and we'll get back to the town use, the vehicle use policy.
Thank you.
So no action taken.
So we have, do we have a specific time for the?
6:30.
Oh, 6:30?
Yeah, Daryl's not available.
And so, and the other thing that we were going to do is also, the, what that we skipped over was you, Lydia, but that's also Finance Committee. So maybe we should take a break, unless there's anything else. Phil, you did submit a request for something. Did you want to speak to that quickly while, while we?
The workman's comp versus, or?
A request for.
For Mr. Ballinger.
Vacation time and personal time to be carried forward.
Did you want to speak to that?
Sure.
So we have a request here to grant vacation and personal time be carried over for an employee who was injured on the job?
Yes, so he was injured mid-March and he didn't return to work till mid-June. So obviously, he could not use his vacation or his personal time. So I'm requesting that that time be carried into the next fiscal year. I don't think it's fair to penalize him for being injured on the job.
Yeah, I have no problem with this, as long as he knows he should use it in this coming fiscal year, that we wouldn't entertain an additional carryover. But yeah, obviously couldn't take the time, yeah, through no fault of his own.
Right, so I just, I guess I have a general question. I don't know if anybody knows the answer. So I, I certainly don't, I support this as well, but wouldn't this be an automatic carryover, an automatic in the sense that if somebody's out, workman's comp, wouldn't state or federal laws indicate that you just can't not give them their time once they come back? You know what I'm saying? Are we just doing this to cover ourselves to make sure?
Correct.
I mean, I would think there's a larger policy that addresses something like this.
Right, I didn't, you know, I had a conversation with the treasurer's office and Phil because I didn't feel that the employee should be penalized.
No, of course not.
There may be a, a federal provision, I'm not aware of that and I can certainly research that, but town policies doesn't have language that allows for that.
It's no big deal. I just, I mean, I certainly have no problem supporting it.
I think that whenever there's something like this kind of carryover, it should be an official action of the board.
Yeah.
So even if it, there is.
Right.
Law that, that means we have to do it.
Yeah.
I still think we should.
Just out of curiosity.
Should do that. And in this case, you know, there's no question. He, he was home recovering and recuperating.
Yeah, from an injury.
And we're glad he's back and doing better, by the way.
I believe this board, previous boards, carryover has always been an official act by the board.
Should be.
Maybe I'm wrong, but no.
And again, I don't disagree, I would just think, given the circumstance, there's, there's probably other sorts of statute or laws that, that would address this as well. Just, so if somebody did have a question on a board, they could say, you know.
I can see your point.
Like if we said no, which we're not going to do, right? They could say, "Well, wait, wait a minute, we got, you know, it's a, it's a legal thing." I will make a motion to approve the vacation and personal time as requested.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I will, I will let him know.
Yes, please.
Yes, and the treasurer's office as well. Okay, so we will now take that break. We are going to go ahead and resume the meeting and at this point, we're joined by the Finance Committee. Feels like.
Feels like old times.
Yeah. So, and you have an introduction to make?
We do. So as many people in town know, we lost, Betsy Ryder moved to Washington and so she So, as many people in town know, we let Betsy Ryder move to Washington, and so she was, has been on our committee for several years. And we, we have a new member, John Wilks, is joining us, and we're excited to have John and his experience. And hopefully, we have a more normal year with the Finance Committee and a little less frequent meetings. Yes, knock on wood. But anyway, but welcome, John.
Thank you.
John, this is really terrific. I'm happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Welcome. You'll have so much fun.
Of course. We all do.
I want to thank John for joining, and he has a new baby, because congratulations.
I know. That's really great.
Congratulations. Oh, that's awesome.
Yes, she's super cute, too. Yeah, and it's always great when, when new and younger people get involved. So, very, very grateful. And I know you have a really great background. Be very helpful on this, on this committee, so happy about that. So, let's get into it.
Yes, so, so, Marlene, do you want to walk us through the, this is year-round transfers?
Well, so Lydia was hoping to sneak in before we got to the actual meet of it because she was on the Select Board agenda, but there's a financial component to what she's bringing forward, so.
Is it Daryl, or do you want to do this?
No, that's fine.
I can wait if you want.
No.
And Daryl, the police chief, is also meeting with us tonight, too.
He's, oh, that's right. I'm sorry, Chief.
He's joining us remotely.
Okay, yes.
We'll get to Lydia first, Mike, and then we'll come back to you.
I'll try to be brief. The Select Board, and I just gave the Finance Committee a packet. This has to do with a company called Social Archiving, or Archive Socials. Got it backwards. But apparently, and I wasn't aware until just recently, that all of our social accounts, Facebook, Instagram, all of those types of accounts are subject to public records requests. And right now, none of our social media accounts are backed up in any way, which means that if I went to try to get any kind of data on comments and different things that were made on these social accounts that someone requested, I wouldn't be able to.
Excuse me. Mike, can you put yourself on mute? You're creating some noise. Sorry, go ahead.
I wouldn't be able to, or, I'm not even sure how I would at this point, but also because we don't have total control of a social media account. If, John, you make a comment on Facebook on something I posted or whatever, you can go in and delete that from your end. If we have the system in place, the social archiving, they're able to capture everything, and it even keeps the things that were deleted. And through this program, you can go in and you can request certain time periods of information that people may request. Now, granted, Hatfield hasn't had a public records request like this yet. I believe some information on social media accounts has been used in the past by the Town of Hatfield for certain reasons. And North Hampton, I talked to the IT guy in North Hampton. They use this social archiving, and they think it's just wonderful. It's very easy to access, very easy to find information. And I've come up with actually 13, it rumor, like 13 different accounts that the Town of Hatfield has that are, right now, not backed up in any way. This isn't part of our server and under the perigis, so they're not backing up anything. So, I think it's something we really seriously need to do to protect ourselves against, you know, in any information we might be requested and then unable to provide. And then we'd be, right now, we're not in compliance with those laws.
Okay, so, so the way social media works is it's always there unless you take it down, but you're saying this would preserve, so if someone put something, say inflammatory.
Right.
Under a town post and then took it off.
Right.
And I mean, I see, not necessarily on our town stuff, but I've seen it on other.
Right.
It can get really.
Crazy.
Yeah.
And the first, the first thing in your packet has to do with framing ham and how it benefited them in a specific case. The next thing is a PowerPoint presentation about social media archiving put out by this Archive Social that I talked to. Very nice people. I really liked talking to them and their presentation. Just a summary and then their quote. The quote they gave us is for up to 12 accounts. Right now, I have 13. Four of those are the schools. And Marlene and I kind of talked about, okay, should the school be separate and we just take care of the town end? Or do we cover all of them? Some of them, two of them are the Hatfield 350th, and maybe Diane, you can speak to this. There's a Facebook page, but there's also an Instagram account. Are these accounts going to be ongoing? Is this something that's going to actually?
I, you know, we haven't had that discussion. I mean, we're, we're obviously done with events.
Right.
Although, there's still some more things. There's going to be the time capsule.
Right.
So, I think at least for a certain amount of time.
During the time, right.
And then you would never want it to go away, right?
Yeah.
Because you, you might want to refer back to it. There was some really neat stuff on the 350th over time, and so, I'm curious to know, can you tell me a list of those, those 13, what they are?
Yes, there's the Town of Hatfield Facebook page, there's the Hatfield Fire Department Facebook page, Hatfield Police Department Facebook page, Hatfield Public Library Facebook page, and the Hatfield Public Library Instagram account, Smith Academy Facebook page and Smith Academy Instagram account, Hatfield Elementary School Facebook page, Hatfield Elementary School Instagram account. I believe Elena was just, like, looking for Instagram and found that. Council on Aging has a Facebook page, the Recreation Department has a Facebook page, 350th has, as I said, the Facebook page and the Instagram account. So, that's 13 right now.
So, what I was thinking is maybe, as you listed them, that there might be a couple that could be consolidated, but it doesn't sound like really there is. They're all distinct.
No, no. The only, the only separation would be if the school, we had the school do their own, do their own thing.
What was the quote? I'm sorry.
The quote for the 12, and we're at 13, was 2,0988 a year. To go up to the next level, which is the standard level, was just under 5,000. It was like 4,988 or.
And that was how many accounts?
Unlimited.
Unlimited.
Unlimited. So, that gives you growth potential if, you know, and you can change at any time, too.
If the school buys a second one, then it costs us $5,000.
Right.
Right. Right, yeah. So, you know, or if they do, you know.
And they're only getting two accounts out of it.
Right, right, so.
Well, and you know, social media is, it's the way the world works now, right? This is, it's.
Yeah.
And so, is there any directive at all from, you know, there's a lot of directives about public records. There's been no official directive on this yet?
That they should be backed up.
That they should be backed up.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lydia, if somebody wanted an official request from the school, some sort of documentation, do they still submit it through you?
It's, well, they, it goes both ways. They'll, they'll do it through the school, but then the school contacts me as the.
Official town.
Chief Records Access Officer.
Okay, so.
So, that's why I think it all should be under one.
That, that's why I asked the question.
Right, because I'm the one that would, you know, do the research or help someone do the research. People are always coming to me as the Chief Records Access Officer because I do the most of it.
Yep.
And other departments do it infrequently.
I mean, on the other hand, if you had two separate accounts, you'd be paying three grand and three grand.
Right, right.
So, you'd be paying more. Then you got two separate umbrellas where it's under you.
It's just that we should do this sooner than later. So, now it's like, okay, where do we find $5,000 to come up with, you know, for this
That's those guys.
That's what.
Look to your right, my left.
That's why I asked to wait, so.
Well, is it, is it possible to put it in, you know, at least roll it into the IT budget and then?
Increase the IT.
And then we can, we can deal with it in the, in the spring.
As a shortfall or something?
As a shortfall in the spring.
Maybe there wouldn't be a shortfall, you know.
Exactly. I don't know. Sean would.
Yeah.
Marlene, that's your account, too.
I mean, technically, yes, we could do that.
Didn't we increase that line this year?
We did, for a number of things that we need to already, that have been identified.
This wasn't one of them.
Right, this was not one of them.
The only other.
Right, but we're two weeks into the fiscal year.
Oh, right, right. So, yes, the money is available. We have not executed all the improvements.
What she's saying is there was no extra identified in there.
Right, when we built that budget, yeah, there wasn't any extra money put in there.
No, I, I get it, but, you know, like, we're about to, we're going to go through and look at a whole bunch of budgets here that I guarantee also probably didn't have any extra money identified in them, but low and behold, it showed up. So, I mean, it's probably fair to deal with it as we get more towards the end of the fiscal year and actually understand the impact, and then we can.
Right.
Address it.
Right. And it seems to make sense to put it in the IT side of it because.
And that was a conversation Lydia and I had, was that maybe it would make sense to add it to the IT budget.
As your Chief Records Access Officer, I'm recommending that you push this forward because we try to be proactive.
I have one maybe last question. So, this, I see this is the monthly or the yearly fee. You know, they broke it down to basically $250 a month. But is there, is there a setup fee, or is that all part of this? You know, is there, is there a second fee? Do you know that?
I believe, I believe, Marlene, you had the conversation, too. I think this is the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, because I think I had asked the question.
They might have split it up and included it in there.
Yeah, one-time costs and then, yeah, but I believe this was, this was it.
All-inclusive.
I'm sure this will become a really interesting legal question at some point.
Yeah.
Given that we don't actually own any of that content.
Right.
Right.
Even the stuff we put up there is not ours.
Do we, it also makes me think, you know, we have all of these accounts. Do we have a policy about what accounts get set up? Who's taking care of them?
Hey, I had, I had to struggle to figure out what we had. I thought, you know, we had a Hatfield Facebook page, and then as I got into this, I'm going, and then Elena mentioned Instagram, and I'm like, oh, yeah, Instagram, you know, I don't do any of that.
So.
Probably should be a policy established by you guys.
I mean, there should be a policy, because even, even if you guys said, hey, we want a Finance Committee page, that should be great, but somebody should be approving.
Right.
Who gets pages and who's managing them and what the content is.
In order to set up a page, you should be going through the Selectmen or.
Or Marlene.
Administrator.
Yeah, somebody.
Or the, or the Chief Records Access.
Well, because we should know the records exist.
The content of what goes on there is also really important, and there needs to be.
Right.
Parameters established, you know.
I would suggest that any department that's considering adding social, some type of social media platform, that they discuss it with the Select.
I mean, I'm all for the, for the, because it's such, they're, they're all, all of those you listed are ones I've looked at. They're really useful tools. They're helpful. I want townspeople to have as much information as possible, but.
And that's what we want to do. We want to achieve that, you know, getting information out to everybody.
If only the town-run accounts.
Right, of course. There's all kinds of other town-ish.
Exactly, the PTA account or.
Booster club, all of those types of things.
Only in Hatfield, which, I had to laugh because somebody says, well, only in Hat, or Hatfield has, has another website or another Facebook page. And I says, oh, that's only in Hatfield. I says, and, and it's, it's a wonderful page.
Oh, it's terrific.
And people really, really like it. I says, yeah, Hatfield has an official Facebook page, but it's not quite as popular.
It's not.
Yeah, Siobhan's.
It's not. Siobhan's is much more interesting. She does a really good job.
And she does a great.
She really does. She does an excellent job with it.
She does an excellent job.
You know, you might even consider, like, how to bring this under one umbrella in some way, like.
You mean the only in Hatfield one?
Well, no, no.
Oh, okay.
No, but it's, like, I'm just talking about the Police Department, the Fire Department, the town page, you know. Maybe the schools are a little different, but I think there's a diff, well, I think there's just a difference between, like, the Police and Fire Department, who work for the Board of Selectmen in the town, versus the school committee having a page and they're elected, right? So, they can have their own opinions about everything. But do the, do the people who work for the Board of Selectmen essentially get to have their own communication strategy? You know, like, and what do they communicate? And maybe it's not a problem right now, but what if someday they say something that you don't agree with or that any future Board doesn't?
Well, that's sort of what I was getting at.
Like, who has control over that?
Policy, and there's got to be, you know, just like with this town use, town vehicle thing, you know, there's, we don't have to recreate the wheel. There's probably already policies that exist in other communities that we could take a look at and make sure it fits. I mean, you obviously want to make sure you're being really careful about the content. I have to say, I've never seen anything but really useful, accurate posts on anything you named. You know, it's really, I mean, Jerry puts great stuff on the COA one, and, and, you know, Bob on Fire about, you know, whatever, burning permits, whatever it might be. So, I mean, at this point, you're right. I mean, things can always go south, but for right now, things are, yeah. But that's what I meant about who authorizes the creation of pages and then obviously the oversight of them. Because, yeah. So, that's totally a discussion for another time and.
Right. Right now, what I would, the best-case scenario would be to have a vote to, yes, go ahead under one umbrella, all of these accounts that we have for 48 something, and you're blessing on that. So, when the salesman calls me back, I have an answer for him.
Well, and I was going to ask, do we need a vote on this? I mean, this is part of IT. Records, records, all our, saving our records data is part of IT.
Maybe it's just an assurance that if the budget is overspent, you'll.
A vote of assurance, but it's hard to.
Right, right. Well, it's like the, my budget last year.
Right.
Where you said, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. We know we've got to cover elections. We will take care of it at the, at the end of the year.
Right.
I think Marlene's looking for that kind of same assurance for her IT budget.
Well, and I don't, yeah, and I personally, I don't, don't mind that. I just, you know, we have to be careful about, we, we technically can't change a budget.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right. You can give a consensus maybe on down the road if this should happen. I'm sure you'd have our support, you know, follow the process, and so, I agree.
This all makes complete sense.
It really does, yeah. I appreciate Lydia that you brought this forward, because honestly.
Yes, we do not want to.
I mean, I never thought about that, but, but we have to think about that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So, I'm going to make a motion, Lydia, to approve your requests for the social media archiving.
Okay.
And the cost, you know, the three, the quote, which was $2,988.
That's only for 13.
No, we're going to do the.
For 13, so for the 13.
For the unlimited.
$4,988.
For the 13 accounts you mentioned to start with.
Under 5,000, just under 5,000.
Yep. For $5,000 to get us up and running and safe with social media archiving, which is very important, so thanks for bringing that forward.
And I'll, I'll second that, and I think that down the road, we do have to probably get a discussion related to what Sean is saying about.
Yep.
How do we get a checklist to the department? So, this is what you follow for social media? This is what you're allowed and what you're not allowed?
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's.
I think we, I agree, Ed, and I think we probably need to have the school committee or at least the administration part of that conversation. So, if they've got the two accounts at each school, there's four, right?
Right, yeah.
They should be under the, the town's umbrella, but they should certainly understand what, So they should be under the town's umbrella, but they should certainly understand what it means and what's going on.
The policies that, once we set it, they should be part of that process, yeah.
I'm looking at you. I don't mean that you're the one that has to do that, but I, you know, we don't want to add another department to something and they're not quite aware that we're doing that, right?
Well, I did talk to Riley this morning briefly to ask if they were doing anything already and so I could take them off of my list. And she goes, to the best of her knowledge, no. I sent out an email to all the departments just to get a little more information on that list. One of the people was, is it Mr. April?
Yeah, Mike April.
Mike April? And he's the IT guy.
Correct.
And so hopefully he'll know if they're doing anything like this, you know, on their own.
Okay.
Yep, good.
So.
Okay.
Chances are not, but if they are, then we could take them off and go with the board.
Sorry.
I second it, so we got to move.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you, Lydia.
Thanks, Lydia.
And then Marlene, if you could just maybe put on the, you know, ever-growing list of things to.
Yeah, look at drafting a policy. I already made a note in the social media, draft social media policy.
There's got to be something, yeah. There's got to be policies out there. You can use, so we have.
Yeah. Hey, Mike.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can. Yes.
Go ahead.
Mike, do you want to update us on, on what's going on?
I'll make it, I'll make it brief. So we had talked about during budget season, the Bridge Academy that was going to be coming up and all the uncertainty with that. It looks like they're settling on about 200 hours per part-time officer to do the bridge. And that's three weeks in person and then 80 hours online is how they're computing that. So we had talked about, you know, at the current pay rate of the part-timers, $19 an hour times 200 hours is what it comes out to, setting some money aside to be able to pay those officers to do that Bridge Academy. We had come up with several scenarios and this was the most practical and the least expensive for us to deal with. So my question is just simply, are we still planning on putting that money aside at this point in time and then how are we going about doing that?
So can I ask a question? I just want to, just for people watching who might not understand, this is as a result of the police reform that was passed in the Commonwealth and it required additional training for part-time departments. Am I right?
Yeah, so in the reform bill, what it says is one standard of training. So full-time officers, well, depending on when you went, it could have ranged from 900 hours to 800 hours, to as low as I think 700 and some odd hours. But, so the one standard of training brings all the part-time officers up to what the MPTC and post considers one standard of training would be full-time training.
Okay. And then my question is, what is the deadline for us having to achieve this? Is it this fiscal year or is it further into the future?
Yeah, so it's by alphabetical order. They're planning on doing this over three years because there's somewhere near about four plus thousand part-time officers in the state. So they're, they're going to do it by alphabetical order. I believe it's A through H for the first batch in 22, fiscal '22, and then fiscal '23 will be H through.
And what is it, what is it, the towns? The A through H is in Hatfield or is it the officer's name?
It's the officer's name.
Okay.
So, so I have, I believe, four that would have to bridge in fiscal '22.
So, so how much money will that, we're estimating that's 200 hours at $20 an hour?
Yeah, so for four officers, it's $15,200 for fiscal '22. I have, I have officers coming and going, so I don't want to put a solid figure of 10 officers. Right now, it's 10 officers over three years. So fiscal '22 would be $15,200, fiscal '23 could be $3,800 or, you know, $7,200, $7,600 rather. So that is going to vary by fiscal year to get all of ours, but it's only the existing ones we have now. Nobody, I can't actually hire anybody else after July 1st, just based on the language of the law. They have to be certified, post-certified for me to hire them on, so I'm not, I don't foresee a mass exodus of my guys between now and the time we can get them bridged over. So at most fiscal '22 is $15,200.
Do you have a projection for '23 and '24, given that you're not expecting officers to leave?
Yeah, so I have, again, four officers with the last name before H. And then after that, and I'm trying to, I'm horrible with their last names half the time, but after that, I think I have three officers to bridge over and then two in fiscal '24.
Okay. So this is the largest hit?
Right.
This is the largest one, yes, only because it's Officer Baynes, Fitzell, Eckler, and Gray, Officer Gray.
Okay.
Right, and we.
And then we'll be added to that, so that's, that's the highest number you'll have in this fiscal year and the two subsequent fiscal years. Okay.
Right. And in your current budget, is there, you have training, I can't remember in your budget if you have any training dollars set aside or you would need all this to come from an additional source?
Well, it's hard to say, Darrell, honestly. Like this year, I think I gave back close to $10,000 in salaries.
Right.
So, I mean, I could cover it until I couldn't, you know what I mean?
Right.
I know what my, I know what my projections are obviously for myself, Clint, the full-timer, and vacation, sick time, so on and so forth with the part-timers now. So, I mean, it comes out to, most of the time, it's, you know, if we have to hire, you know, if I have to have cops out there for one reason or another, which starts to add money up. But yeah, this year was, you know, we were able to give back $10,000. So it's hard to say. I could give back 5,000. I could give back nothing. I could run a deficit, you know, it's almost impossible to tell at this point in time over in these fiscal years.
Right, so going forward, we could, this is a little bit similar to what we just went through with Lydia. You know, we offered the support. We understand that the police officers need this, need this training and as you run out of money, you would then come to us, you know, we have some money set aside in finance reserve, then we would, you know, in theory, we would be able to, we would be able to help with that. And then like we're doing after this, year-end transfers, we could also do, you know, do the, some of it in year-end transfers, right? So multiple ways that we can address this.
I have zero issue with that. I mean, I, if that's what we decide, I honestly, I don't, I don't have any issue with that. It's easy to track what, you know, what my projections are going to be, so we can certainly.
The only question I have is just about, is there any minimum like number of hours you have to work to be?
I'm sorry, it's actually.
Sorry, is there any minimum like number of hours that people work for the town before we provide them with the 800 hours of training?
No, unfortunately not, no. I take a big risk hiring my officers. They're very expensive to outfit and sometimes they don't work out, unfortunately, which is a little heartbreaking sometimes because, you know.
I guess just, are the people, are the people we're talking about this year, like they're all working some significant number of hours? There, there's no one in this group of people that's working like two hours a month or something and now we're going to pay for them to go to 800?
No, not at all. The, out of the bunch I mentioned, my, my least worked guy is Officer Gray. He works a couple of shifts a month, but he's also been with us for, I think, about eight years and he's, he's just a very good officer, very good fit and he has a very good full-time job in North Hampton and, but his plans are that he's not going anywhere. So we're not going to lose him to a full-time police job somewhere. He's just going to stay with us forever, hopefully, so.
Yeah, that would be my concern, just that we're going to pay to train somebody essentially who doesn't work very much and really they're not working very much because they're going to go somewhere else and that's all.
Yeah.
We always have that risk.
I have to, that for sure.
Well, and.
There's just no way we're fixing it.
And some years ago, I can remember, and this is dealing with EMTs, we used to provide some money for training to go to a class and in return, there was some sort of commitment to the town to, you know, so that.
Stick around for a certain amount of time.
Just stick around for a while. I mean, is that at all, I mean, that obviously is something that the select board would have to figure out, but is that any kind of reasonable or is that?
Well, I think this is being prescribed by statute now, so I mean, we can't.
Right.
You know.
True, and I guess my only comment to that would be is that we have, you know, taking even just a couple of our younger officers, you know, some of them just dreamed to be a police officer and then a town offers them a full-time job. I mean, it's.
Right.
It's kind of hard to force them to stay here.
Yeah. No, and that's, that's fine. I just thought I would ask the question because it is hard. I mean, we're going to invest X amount of dollars into them, which I think is great. I mean, by statute, we have to do that, but we do run the risk of, and there's probably nothing we can do about that.
Yeah, and we've run into this. I mean, I've run into this the past few years where guys just didn't work out for one reason or another. You know, it's, it's always after, you know, we've spent considerable money on them.
Right.
You know, it cost me probably 1,500 plus dollars just to get somebody in a uniform. And when they only work a few weeks for whatever reason or another, it's a little hard, but not much I can do about it, I guess.
So I guess as far as the finance committee is, I mean, I guess if we're all on board with this, that go ahead and do what you got to do and then we'll, we'll talk in the spring when you run out of money.
I mean, we don't really have a choice. We have to do it. It's just a matter of how we fund it.
Right, well, we appreciate the heads up, Chief.
Yeah.
And I think it's.
Well, and he's been talking to us about it for a long time. And actually, this, the actual hit is much less than what you were projecting was possible when the legislation was pending. So it's better than it could have been or that we expected it might have been, so.
Right, and you know, there's still a chance, I don't know how big of a chance, but there's still a chance the legislature could find someone, you know, to help out with this. The other thing too is, is that they're still fighting, well, not even fighting, but they're still trying to decide, some of my officers already have part of that bridge training. So they're still trying to figure out if those officers have to go through it again. If they decide they don't, for instance, the firearms, which is a 56-hour class, some of my officers, or them officers have that 56-hour class. So it doesn't make sense for them to have to go through it in the bridge again. If that's the case, that saves, you know, 80, 100, 120 hours right there, but we have to wait for the officers to be there to make a decision, tell us what we have to do or not do.
Well, it's okay if it turns out to be less money. It's just not okay if it turns out to be more, so, okay. Keep us posted.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
I'll keep my regular salary line and then I'll keep, if it's okay with Marlene, I'll just keep her posted on where I'm at and what I'm projecting for shortfalls or anything.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way to do it. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, so now we can actually get to your actual posted business. I'll turn it over to you, Darrell.
Yeah, Marlene, I'm going to let Marlene because we've just seen some of these numbers for the first time, so.
Yes, I had, the other day had sent a spreadsheet that Lori and I were working on and that was work in progress and our accountant is joining us remotely.
Hi, Lori.
Hi, Lori.
So we, late this afternoon, you know, finished this up and what Lori posted a warrant today, an FY '21 warrant, however, it's not the last one. There will be one more. But what we bring before you here is the shortfalls totaling $61,469.91. And we're recommending that, that be funded, all of it be funded from the health insurance. You know, typically we've taken from other various departments, but health insurance line ended with a heavy surplus this year. On the right-hand side of the spreadsheet is a list of those departments that are in deficit.
Joe overspent his money?
By 64 cents. Is that like a postage stamp?
I was the low winner with $4.70.
I don't even see that on here.
No, that was a lie. I don't think, yeah, you're, you're okay, Lydia. You're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Joe wins.
So accounting, that isn't a surprise to us. We, we had discussed this earlier in the year and so I think it's, we were estimating around 20,000, however, we realized that the accounting budget that was funded for '21 did not take into consideration costs for Vadar. There are costs for using the Vadar software program.
This is in the accounting line?
Well, I'm sorry, not for Vadar. Well, for Vadar and Tyler, is that correct, Lori? It's Vadar and Tyler. We pay a cost to Tyler because the HR portion, the payroll, is maintained in Tyler.
Correct.
Right, okay. And that cost was not built into the accountant's operating budget.
Was it for the coming fiscal year?
It has been.
Okay.
I believe, did, yes, I think we did.
We upped the budget for that.
We did, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we could just go through these, just because I know people are maybe watching at home. So the moderator was 64 cents, the accounting was $29,357.05, which you just explained. And then technology was $3,706.70.
Right, earlier in the year, I had requested a transfer from the reserve fund and we had some unexpected costs come up during the year. You, you just don't know if, if a printer stops working or has problems, you're trying to, you know.
Right, it all has to do with.
Yeah, exactly.
Technology, which is, okay, self-explanatory. And then building inspector wages, $1,066.19. That must just be.
Lori, is that all the inspectors or just the building inspector?
Next question.
The building inspector wages?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look.
Let's get, I thought, yeah, I thought that the building is.
It's not a lot of money. I'm sure it's just, you know, okay.
That's all right, Lori.
That's fine.
Right.
The motor pool, $11,742.60. Do you know, Marlene, or do you want to?
So that is vehicle maintenance?
Oh, vehicle maintenance.
And Phil is here to.
You want to just?
That was just because of the injury. We have to, you know, we have to clear out.
Oh, you, okay.
We had no in-house mechanic.
Oh, right.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. And then town building electricity is $6,917.05. That's self-explanatory. Transfer station expenses, $6,272.24, Phil?
Can you just break down what the comp factor is?
Okay. And then employee Medicare, $2,474.4, also self-explanatory, so, okay.
Finance committee, you guys have any questions on any of these? Okay, so I, if I do this right, I would entertain a motion to transfer $61,469.91 from health insurance to those above-named accounts for, to make them whole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion, motion carries and then you guys have.
You have to vote them too?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the transfers as presented from health insurance account to those departments to true them up.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marlene and Lori.
Thank you, Marlene, Phil.
I just also like to recognize the water and sewer. Again, these are not surprises. We had learned a couple of months ago that both water and sewer would go into deficit and currently water has a deficit of $96,482.65 and sewer has a deficit of $63,391. So Lori and I were talking about this and perhaps if there is a special town meeting in the fall, retained earnings, we could take care of these deficits with potential retained earnings.
Okay.
We don't have other monies to take care of this right now?
No.
We used all our finance reserve money?
No, we have not used all of finance reserve money.
So.
For the prior fiscal year?
For, for '21. We're talking about '21.
Well, we're in '22, so, yeah.
Why aren't we trying to fix this?
Well, you could do, you could do that. I just thought that, you know, there will be money in water and sewer retained earnings that would be appropriate to take care of it with that.
I would wait till the retained earnings are certified for.
Yeah, we would, they would have to be certified, but that's, that's your call.
But to do any, but if we wait, how soon will they be certified?
Once the audit is.
So that's not until it's fall? Because then we can't go back and say, oh yeah, let's take X amount of dollars out of these accounts to.
Right, I don't believe we have to wait until the audit is done. It's when the accountant closes up the fiscal year and submits free cash.
Well, and Lori's here, we could certainly ask timeframe.
Lori, what do you think we should do?
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing you guys, there's a lot of feedback, but I think you're trying to determine what to do about the snow ice present.
No, not.
I mean, the snow ice, water and sewer.
Yeah, if, if.
So, if there's money in finance reserve from '21 that can take care of some or most of this, wouldn't we want to, wouldn't we want to take care of this now?
Do you want, do you want to take general fund money and use it to pay a water sewer deficit?
Well, to be honest with you, our enterprise funds are not really enterprise funds, Lori, when you comes right down to it.
I mean, is there a thought?
The question is, is it better, what is the timeframe for waiting for the retention funds to be identified, certified, whatever you want to?
And then, and then even if they're certified, the retained earnings would
Retained, sorry, retained earnings.
Would allow them to fix things that break further down the road.
Yeah, I mean, either use it for past expenses or
Right.
Future expenses, right?
Or keep doing this, right.
Right. Right. I, I don't know. I don't
We're looking for advice from you, Lori.
Well, I guess one question would be, how much, how much are we anticipating in retained earnings?
Correct.
Right.
Because if there's not enough to do it, then we got to do something anyway. Right? We know that.
Or do, do one of them out of one and one of them out of the other, right?
Right.
One's 93 and one's 26 or whatever.
Are you hearing all of this, Lori?
Yes, yes.
Do you know, how, how much money do, do we have left in finance reserve right now?
After all these transfers?
Should be none.
Yeah, but none of those are coming from
None of the transfers came out of health insurance. None of them came out of finance reserve.
All right. Right, right, right. So, you have 221,975.
So, why
So technically, you can take
So
Cover both of them.
What are we anticipating having in retained earnings in water and sewer, roughly? Do we have
Well, we've increased the rate, so I can see that the retained earnings should be a lot higher than they've been in the past.
Yeah. Give me a number.
I think we took in 1.1 million. I mean, the operating budget is probably 800,000, so, about 300,000.
So, it'll be, so it's possible?
Well, like you say, it's a crapshoot because you don't know what it is. You don't know what that number's going to
And you don't know what's going to happen next.
Right. I mean, what, what I
And those you can appropriately use in the coming fiscal, you can budget those in where the finance reserve
Finance reserve, we have tonight to spend
That's what I'm saying. It's
In fact, if we, if we had to, we could use water and sewer retained earnings to pay operating expenses at water and sewer in the future and spend that money
Right.
That the town kicks in for operate, you know, for expenses somewhere. We could pay loans and use that money somewhere else if we had to.
If we had to. Right. And, and, and I guess part of the reason that I bring this up is, I don't, I don't think it had happened, but I don't want to have to go to a special town meeting to fix this.
No.
Right?
You need it.
That's, and so there's a part of me that thinks, let's
Fix it with the old money.
Right. And then we'll go forward. And if we need that money, we can figure out a way to
Right.
Come back around to it. I mean
Right.
There's lots of ways to do that because we're so intermeshed anyway.
Right. Right. I mean, yeah, 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 that's right. I mean
And there's going to be a deficit probably in the coming year too.
Yeah, most of the, most of the loans on the sewer side are all out of our
Taxation.
Taxation.
Right.
So
And we're doing projects. And yes, yeah, and you're spending money right now. So, Lori, do you see a downside, or Lori and Marlene, is there a downside if we just do both these deficits out of finance reserve? We have money in finance reserve to take care of this now.
Yeah, that's, that's okay too. Lori, legally, I'm not aware of any reason why you can't.
Sorry, I was muted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason you couldn't do that. I mean, it's all the same money, if you will, but
Right.
Again, if you want the sewer and water funds to be self-sufficient, then you'd love them to be self-sufficient and keep that money in the general fund for other purposes.
So, Lori, did we use any of the certified retained earnings?
No.
The 40-something thousand?
No, we did not.
So, we could use that too.
So, we could use the 40,000 that's certified now?
But that, that closed out on June 30th, though. Right, Lori? Is that already, well, you haven't closed out. It's still, the retained earnings
The current certified.
The current retained earnings that had been certified, that still requires a town meeting vote, though, to use that.
It goes away, well, that goes away as of June 30th.
Correct. Correct.
Oh, so, so the retained earnings require a town meeting vote?
Right. If you're going to
Like free cash. It's like free cash. So, it's
Yeah. You still have to vote that.
So, so even if this is certified, we still have to come to a town meeting to do this?
The town has, whenever retained earnings is used, you've had to vote that. You have to authorize it.
Yeah, because it's like free cash. It closed out on 30th. It's not, it's not appropriated anymore on my finance reserve, which is still appropriate.
But if, but if the, the new retained earnings are certified in September 1st, in order to spend them?
Yeah.
You have
You have to go to a town
Town meeting. Yes. Just like free cash. Just like free cash.
That makes that easy.
Yeah, okay. Well, I know what I would suggest we do.
Yeah, not do that.
I mean, and I'm, and I'm not being, I, you know
No, it's
You know, and I
Retained earnings always makes you think you, you have money in the bank, right?
Right.
In the water and sewer bank. And you can just spend it as it comes. But that's not how it works.
That's not how it works.
Right. We can get that money back.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not like you can write a check tomorrow using it, you know.
We could pay off, we could pay all these water and sewer loans with it next year and use, you know, and then take the free cash and do something, put it in finance reserve if we want to do that, or use something for something else or whatever.
Exactly.
It's just not readily available as the bottom line.
So, if I have these numbers right, so the water deficit is 96,482.65?
Yes.
So
Presently, presently.
So, I don't know, finance committee, I would entertain a motion to, to pay that out of our fiscal '21 finance reserve.
Yeah, second.
If anyone has access to a computer, I can print this out. I mean, I can send the spreadsheet so you guys can print it out and sign it.
Yeah, Marlene's got access. Yeah.
Can I use this one?
Is it, is the spreadsheet that Lori, you are working on today, Lori, right?
I think Lori wants our signature.
We need, we need another signature thing today.
Oh, because the water and sewer. I see what she's saying.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and print that or send email it to Karen?
Is that the executive assistant email, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, did somebody make a motion on that?
Are you, well, sure.
Is there a second? Any more discussion?
I just want to point out, this deficit is going to grow. Water and Sewer submitted invoices for FY '21 today, so it will be higher than this.
But we can't fix it. After, after July 15th, we can't fix this.
That is correct. That is correct.
And we're not meeting before July 15th. So, John, for, for, for your benefit, we have until July 15th to spend money in fiscal year '21, which ended June 30th. After that, we cannot access that money. All the money
Without town meeting, right? Well, you have to
Falls to free cash.
I asked Lori just before the meeting if
So, that's why we're looking
Water and sewer had been in touch.
And last year, we put extra money in finance
Be a prior year deficiency.
To spend this. So, you know, for cases like this.
What were the, were they large bills? Were they just average, normal, expected?
What is the amounts? Okay, if I speak on your, I know you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
So, if there's additional monies, excuse me, additional deficits coming, what is the deficit that we're talking about tonight? When is it through? Like, what's the end date of that? Do we know? Is it through June 1st? Is it through May 1st?
Through June 30th. There are expenses through June 30th.
I understand that, but
Additional ones.
But there's going to be additional funds?
Right. We're doing one more. We're, we're processing one more FY '21.
So, how much money will be deficit?
And that's what I, I had asked Lori. She said she hadn't heard from
When are we, Lori, when are we going to know what
Because it's not only water and sewer. There's other, there's other expenditures that are going to be on there that are in deficit.
Highway, well, highway's not in deficit.
Transfer station. If there's another one for trucking.
So, you submitted an invoice, so that's, the accountant needs that information.
But that's outside the scope of this. That was, shouldn't that have been with the previous thing we already voted on?
I was curious about the water and sewer, if we knew what that was going to be, because then you can over, you can over-transfer tonight knowing what's coming.
I was going to suggest, I was going to suggest 100,000 for water.
Let's do 105,000.
170.
So, you have an extra 60
Just for water?
At the end.
We have an extra 62 at the end?
At the end. If you transferred the 96,000, the 63, you're going to 62.
Yeah, it's 221,000.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Lori, say that again?
Is in free cash reserve.
1,000 to water and 70,000 to sewer.
Oh, okay. I thought she said 170,000.
Yeah, what if, what if, what if we, is 100,000, do you think that 4,000 is going to cover the deficit, the additional deficit, or should we add a little to that?
I guess that's a question for Phil.
Phil?
I would add a little bit more. Just to be safe.
So, if we go to 105,000?
105 and then have it on some on the sewer side. That would give us 9,000 extra. And then, what, you got seven? What's the deficit on sewer?
It's 63,9
63,391.
But if we move that to 70?
70, yeah.
70?
Yeah. Is 70 going to be, that's another
70,000.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, it could just, it would just be a prior year deficiency.
Right.
Which is not. And then we just, we have to fix it. I mean, we don't have to go to town meeting. We could
We don't have to go to a special
We could do it at the annual town meeting too.
Right.
Yeah, we could.
Right.
Mm-hmm. If it's beyond those higher amounts
If it's beyond those numbers, we can, we can, yeah, we don't have to have a special town meeting to do it. We can do it at annual. Okay. So, so the motion is 105,000 for water, water enterprise. And so, do we want to do this as two separate motions as closed?
It's only one enterprise one. Yeah, do them both. It's only one.
Do them both. Okay. So, so what's the total? It's going to be 175,000?
Yep.
So, 175,000 to take care of deficits in water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other discussion on this?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Our, our department heads instructed to make sure that all of this stuff is in
Yes.
I mean, like, this seems like
Since April.
We go through this every year.
Yes, we do.
So, if you, even if it's to say, like, I know this bill is coming. We're going to have this bill that's five grand for whatever, to at least let you know so that this isn't a guessing game. This shouldn't be a guessing game.
Right.
I mean, that's beside the, it's outside the scope of what we're talking about, but it seems like a pretty simple thing to try to accomplish, since we know it's coming every single year. So, let's
So, I just have one more question for Lori.
Go ahead.
So, what about the Chapter 90 deficit?
Um, what deficit?
I thought there was a
We took care of the town, we took care of the town meeting. And everything that has been spent, we put in for reimbursement.
Okay, but I thought there was something pending at the after-town meeting. There was one thing from 2017 or something for like 8,700 dollars.
2017.
Well, because
No, Lori, that was taken care of.
I thought we missed something at town meeting that we didn't put in. A deficit in Chapter 90.
Right. We'd taken care of that, Lori. That was an adjustment because it was in, was it the wrong year or posted incorrectly?
Yeah, I was, I can't remember where we posted it. Yeah, we took care of it. An internal transfer.
So, there's no deficit then?
Okay, long as it's taken care of, because I know that the conversation
It was taken care of.
Prior was that, you know, are we going to have enough money at the end of fiscal year to cover it?
Yeah, it was taken care of.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're, we're good now?
And if you guys can reconcile with, with Lori, Chapter 90?
Yeah.
Make sure that, yeah, that's staying on top of that.
All right. And Lori, you're emailing whatever it is the finance committee has assigned for this 170,000 dollars?
Yep. I sent it to Karen. She's printing it out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori.
We don't do the forms by hand, anyone?
What's that?
We don't do the forms by hand, anyone? Apparently not. Okay. Oh, this is for you.
And you guys have your other business, which you can do while we wait for the forms.
Oh, we have to sign.
Now, is she revising this form to approve water and sewer on there?
Don't you have minutes and reorganization?
We have reorganization. We were just going to step
Oh, okay.
We were going to go into the other room and do that.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
So, you guys can finish your meeting and stuff.
Okay. Oh, here she comes.
We can put a sign.
Huh?
Is it, okay, thank you.
There's someone who can sign.
Oh, we, we sign these?
Just like this.
Oh.
We just need the one that, of two boards. Well, we don't have to sign, we don't have to sign the water and sewer.
You don't have to do the water or the other one.
Yeah, we sign the other one.
The water and sewer one is just for the finance committee.
Yep.
Yeah, no, we just need
That's okay.
Just the one.
Coming from the reserve.
Um, you know what? We'll take a copy for the file. Thank you.
Didn't we already vote on this? We, we voted on the transfers, didn't we?
Yeah, but we have to sign it for the account.
Yeah. No, I know that. But we voted
Oh, we voted on it.
Yeah, we voted it in.
Yeah, you did.
For the earlier
But we do not vote the water and sewer ones.
It's coming out of the reserve fund.
Okay, that's right. That's right. Okay.
Let me get a copy of that.
What was the amount of your motion?
175.
A copy for you.
Trying to make sure they lined up. Thank you.